Plaid lead with the light of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every kingdom, justice for all.
Tonight for our invocation, we have Jim Hood from Lasting M. Paton Church where Pastor Steve Weaver, Scott Weaver, sorry, Scott Weaver on the pincher for the pincher.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for all these newly minded people, people that want to see things go in a direction that pleases you and pleases us here. God, we ask that wisdom and courtesy sit on this place and in our hearts, for the ego has no place in here. God, we give it over to you and your beautiful name, we pray. Uh, we've got a really cool guitar player that used to sit up there with the guys. Uh, we got a probably the largest drummer in Georgia. And probably more tattoos were gathered in the Church of the Nation. It's just a great place. If you guys are looking for a place to call home and just normal people that struggle the same things you are, come visit us. We welcome you to everybody. And like the sign says, there's no perfect people allowed. If you're a sinner or a hypocrite or an addict or whatever, there's plenty of room for you.
What time do we meet? What time?
We meet at eleven on Sundays and I believe I meet at seven on Wednesdays. I typically don't make a Wednesday service because so. Thank you so much for being here and I thank you guys.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I know we have a couple items to add. Uh, entertain the motions regarding the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn the agenda. And I'd like to add the solid waste appointment, the closure of the American Rescue Plan Funds and the shared facility needs.
Okay, so second, we have a motion by Commissioner Gillis, a second by Commissioner Fletcher uh, to add the um, solid waste appointment, uh, the closure of the ARP funds and the shared facility needs. Let's make that item number ten, eleven, twelve. Any other discussions? Or additions? All right, call it to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. The next item is the approval of the minutes. I know you guys have had a chance to take a look at it. So I'll entertain motions regarding to the three sets of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the public hearing December tenth, twenty twenty four. Workshop meeting December tenth, twenty twenty four and the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four regular business meeting.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Love, a second by Commissioner Fletcher to approve the public hearing minutes from December tenth, twenty twenty four, the workshop meeting minutes from December tenth, twenty twenty four and the minutes from the December seventeenth regular business meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, call it to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we have some annual appointments. The first one uh, is the twenty twenty five vice chair will be through the rotation District One, Gerard Fletcher.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we um, appoint Commissioner Dr. Fletcher as the twenty twenty five vice chair.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Gillis and a second by Commissioner Love to appoint for the twenty twenty five vice chair for District One, Commissioner Dr. Gerard Fletcher. Any discussion? Hearing none, we call it to vote. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And I do like the fact that you did put Commissioner before Doctor because it does trump Doctor. And make sure we took care of my household. Okay, the next item is the county attorney. Uh, Scott Mayfield is currently the city county attorney from Smith, Welch, Webb and White. I entertain motions regarding the county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint a county attorney, Scott Mayfield, Smith, Webb, Webb and White.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Fletcher and a second by Commissioner Gillis to appoint the county attorney as Scott Mayfield with the firm of Smith, Welch, Webb and White. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Scott, a lot going on. You good?
Twenty-three years.
There you go again.
Long as y'all have it.
Okay, thanks, sir. Thanks, sir.
We call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And the next item is our open records officer, which is the county clerk, Carlette Davidson. I entertain motions regarding.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint County Clerk Carlette Davidson as our open records officer.
Yes, indeed. We have a motion by Commissioner Love and a second by Commissioner Truman to approve the open uh, records officer clerk uh, by uh, Carlette Basin. I got me messed up there. Any discussion? Yes.
Same thing.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Truman, I'm gonna get a ball when you write it right here because I love to call you Truman. All right. And now for the county physicians. Um, we have a list of county physicians that we have used in the past. The first one, Doctors Woodall, Wilson Manley, Dr. Aaron Weiss, Family Medical Center, Family Medical Center of Griffin, the Houston Clinic, Orthopedic Surgery, Orthopedic Sports Medicine and Surgery of Thompson, Orthopedic Sports Medicine and Surgery, Brandon Boyce, Arts for Georgia, Resurgent Orthopedics Griffin and Resurgence, Resurgence Orthopedic and Fayette. I entertain motions regarding our county physicians.
So moved.
Thank you.
Can I cheat on that?
You did. We have a motion by Commissioner Love and one by Commissioner Fletcher to approve our panel of county physicians. All in favor, signify. Any discussion? Hearing none, we call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. The next one is our county surveyor. It's currently James Butler. I entertain motions regarding our county surveyor.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that James Butler be appointed our county surveyor. Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Love and a second by Commissioner Fletcher to appoint James Butler as our county surveyor. Any discussion?
One more time. Uh, is Mr. Butler here?
No, he's not.
All right, how about I need you?
Yeah, I'm here.
All good?
Yes. I don't want to speak for Mr. Butler, but he has not said anything about changing twenty twenty five.
Okay, then you're all good because this does, this reports to your office.
The last time I had a conversation with him, he was okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. The next appointment we have is the Three Rivers Regional County Representative, which is currently District Two Commissioner Jason Love. I entertain motions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we approve the Three Rivers Regional County Representative, District Two, Mr. Well, Commissioner, Mr. Jason Love.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher and a second by Commissioner Gillis to appoint Commissioner Jason Love for the county representative uh, for the Three Rivers Regional Council. All in favors, any discussion?
Commissioner Love, are you okay with this?
I'm still in. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for the option there.
All right.
That was good. That was good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
The same, sir.
That's good. It's always good to laugh. Thank you for that. All right, the next representative we have also for the Three Rivers Regional Council is non-public uh, member, Urban Trice.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We do non-public Urban Trice, but they can't represent it for Three Rivers.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bull and a second by Commissioner Fletcher to approve for the Three Rivers Regional Council, the non-public member, Urban Trice. Any discussion?
Mr. Trice here?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
He's good as well. Can I talk to him?
You talked to him? Yeah. Thank you, sir.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. The next item is the E nine one one committee appointee, uh, which is County Commissioner, District Four, Truman Boyle. I entertain motions in reference to the E nine one one committee appointee.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Truman Boyle to the E nine one one committee.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Gillis and a second by Commissioner Fletcher to approve the E nine one one committee appointee as uh, County Commissioner Truman Boyle. Any discussion?
You good, Truman?
Okay, then. Any discuss, any other discussion? Hearing none, we call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Same.
Upstate. All right, the next, no old business, but we do have some new business. The first one is the alcohol license for um, addition for wine sales at the Magic Market.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Magic Market has opened and if y'all have not been by there to get food, the businesses are the best businesses I think since Hardee's shut down, so it is well worth coming in. Uh, at the end of last year, they were getting their license together. They were approved for a malt beverage, which is a beer alcohol license. A few weeks back, they realized as they were talking that they really did want to add a wine license on top of that, so this is the variable for that, should it be approved, is the request.
Any questions for Ms. Anita regarding the alcohol license for the Magic Market?
I always like to ask all these alcohol problems. Any problems previous or present?
No, sir. There were, we have a pretty strict ordinance when it comes to who's qualified and able to receive an ordinance. All that is done before it comes to you, so you will never be brought an application that has an issue with them. If it's come into you, it's passed all the tests.
Thank you, ma'am.
And no community, community complaints?
No, sir. That, it's a new location, a new old location. Give it time, they're making, and if there is, we'll nail it then. Those will come to you. That's the point.
Any other questions? All right, I retain motions regarding the alcohol license for the Magic Market.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we uh, approve the alcohol license for the addition of wine sales for Magic Market.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Gillis and a second by Commissioner Love to approve the addition of wine sales for the Magic Market. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs?
Yeah.
The motion carries.
Thank you. The next one is the fire department PTO. Um, I had a very long conversation about this at the workshop the other day. Chief, would you like to come on up? And Sean, would you like to introduce the topic?
Yes, sir. Um, previous year, we transferred over to PTO and we actually got feedback from a number of our departments. And we got some feedback from um, the administrative assistant at kind of the, I don't think chief communicated with the fire chiefs. So the fire chief is just trying to make sure it gets wide um, on his side, so. I think there's been some explaining a little bit more on some of the hours.
Yeah, we're just uh, basically going from a forty hour employee to a twenty-four hour format, so there's a little bit more hours involved. Same days to equal with the forty hour employee and allow our shifts while we get covered so we can keep the four man home duty at all times at all possible, so that's what we're asking for. And Leslie actually come up with the numbers uh, based on her studies and of course what I have done as well, so we've come to that agreement. That's all I have.
Any questions for the chief? Hearing none.
One for Sean.
Okay, Sean, all good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
So um, I entertain motions in reference to the fire department PTO change.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the fire department PTO as presented.
Second. So a motion by Commissioner Love and a second by Commissioner Fletcher to approve the fire department PTO as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, the next item um, is the approval of the twenty twenty five holidays. Mr. County, thank you for taking the lead on this and working with the directors to come up with a list. Uh, would you like to go ahead and present that?
Yes, sir. And one of this, we just want to make sure our citizens don't know what days we're going to be shutting down to, but also know our uh, calendars. Because we did put the included two floating holidays. I did talk to most of our departments and most of the departments that agreed that um, they would add those two holidays. A lot of other counties are doing it, so we're just trying to be consistent where um, the citizens come in and one department is closed and another department is open, so we're just trying to be consistent. And also notify the um, citizens what days will be closed and also the days will be closed in two before the holiday. When we get, make sure our department heads to drive that, that conversation with our customs officer about it, so that probably so far it's been good. That's all.
Any additional questions?
Yes, sir. Uh, Sean, I, for two years, you and I, you and I have kind of put our heads over the number of those that are up there. What I want to make sure of is that this past holiday season, one of our departments was closed on days that were not listed up there. They took it upon themselves to adjust that. If we adopt this policy, this will be the policy for all our departments.
We did have one that actually works on Saturdays or something like that and I'm going to try to communicate with them about sick ones is and then using those Saturday days as time to be able to take off when the employees need to.
Okay, so if we vote this in, this is kind of the law of land for this year. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we pick the vote. I mean, uh, I entertain any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we uh, approve the list of twenty twenty five county holidays.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher and a second by Commissioner Bull to approve the top list for the twenty twenty five uh, holidays. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, we call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the solid waste authority appointment.
Mr. Chairman, if we may, um, may I say, okay, um, we, what? For most of you in here, you know that we've been working on, on this for a couple of years. And Commissioner Fletcher and I, we, we, we've bumped heads a few times. But I have to be uh, very forthright in saying that some of the success that we've had lately is one hundred percent because of Commissioner Fletcher. And so before we do this appointment, I think that you more than have earned the opportunity to say whether you would like to be appointed.
I appreciate the.
I knew the answer before I asked, but I, the past couple of months, I, maybe the past year, uh, it has really been an honor to uh, to work with Commissioner Fletcher on this, so thank you. Uh, and with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, sir, for motion on that.
All right, uh, I entertain motions for appointment for the solid waste authority.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that Commissioner Truman Boyle uh, be appointed to the solid waste authority uh, replacing the county coroner.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Love and a second by Commissioner Gillis to appoint Commissioner Truman Boyle to the solid waste authority to replace um, Clay Tilery, our, our county coroner. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Um, when anybody sees Clay, uh, tell him thank you. This is not a surprise to Clay. Uh, it was, he stepped in when we needed him to, uh, and we could not be more grateful for his service. This is not a surprise to him. He, he was awaiting this appointment, so he, he will smile like Commissioner Fletcher smiled just a minute. Truman, got a chance for sir. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Sure.
Okay, we want to finish it. Motion carries. All right, the next item is the closure of the ARP funds. Mr. Carlette, do you want to explain that, Michelle?
Yes, sir. This is the first that we decided to federal go about three years ago, we um, actually spent a total of um, three point seven million dollars in several projects and forced plans to close it in the bank. We had to have minutes that we actually officially had to close it. So this is just a formality for the bank to be able to close out accounts, so then they go with the account.
We're at a complete zero?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We had about six thousand seven hundred dollars that we actually, with the project we had for the um, scanning project for the laser fish and all that, we actually used to buy scanners for these areas to be able to scan and go into that laser field. So that should make sense for us to scan documents and also for the future stuff, scanning stuff into the system, so moving forward with the scanning documents.
Any other, any questions for Sean or for Carlette? You're just so diligent to make sure we add it on the agenda, so I appreciate that. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, actually, I didn't get a motion. Didn't get a motion, sorry.
I get that motion.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we lose that members who hired both counties.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Gillis and a second by Commissioner Fletcher to close our ARP funds at the bank that are now at zero. Any discussion? Hearing none, we call it to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So uh, tonight, the next item that we have added to the agenda, uh, we have a uh, presentation uh, from our sheriff's office um, about the facilities.
I don't have a presentation, but I was talking. So uh, let's talk a little bit about the sheriff's office. Uh, uh, the sheriff's office is running out of space. It's no secret. I've got a grand jury list from the last ten years that all spell out the same thing. We're running out of space. We need more space. Um, the courthouse, I know if y'all remember correctly, they were um, storing all of their files down in the basement. We had a black mold issue in the basement. We had to get cleaned. So now they're taking up extra spaces at the courthouse, the clerk's office and the DA's office and the public defender's office to store files. So that's what brought this topic up. I was speaking with the uh, district attorney, Jonathan Adams, and um, he mentioned the Martin Building. I know the Martin Building is uh, falling in or whatever. I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a construction guy, but the upstairs would be adequate for the sheriff's office to move our investigations unit out there. The investigate, where they sit now, a little bit of history, was an old gas, where the Zaxby's is, was a propane gas, I think they sold propane gas out of there. When that, when that went out of business, the sheriff, I think the sheriff at the time, Sheriff Waller bought that building and moved it to the right side of the sheriff's office. We had a flood issue, so Sheriff Vice then moved it uh, to the left side of the sheriff's office where it sits now, and they redone it. And then since then, in two thousand and fifteen, needing more space and office, office space, we um, got to the town of Outdoor. They donated some money to allow us to add on an additional evidence room and about four more offices, so that's where it sits now. I talked with Sean in, in excess about this and we've added, I think of, I don't know, Sean, you have to tell me, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our splosh to add on to that trailer for more offices, and I think it was going to give us about five more offices. It's still not going to be really adequate enough, but uh, the Martin Building upstairs, not downstairs, but the upstairs would be moving ready for us using some of that splosh money. It won't fix any foundation issues. It won't fix any structural issues, but it will certainly uh, free up office space for us. Uh, just this week, what is today, Tuesday, just last week, we had the Georgia State Patrol SWAT team down on a call that we had to go on and we were all, gee, I wish I could, I should have took a picture for you guys, but we had people standing outside trying to do our briefing. We're just, we're just out of space completely for us, for files and for office space. Um, I noticed a hot button with the, with everybody here about the Martin Building probably needs to be sold or, or maybe not. But if it's not, we would love to utilize the upstairs of that building, use some of the splosh money to uh, buy uh, furniture, buy camera equipment that we need. It would give us adequate meeting space in the um, where the voting office used to be. Um, and we just think that it was worth it for us, so. We're asking y'all for you, for us to be able to utilize that uh, for that space upstairs, um, for at least, you know, a temporary, of course, five or ten years. Temporary, eight years would be great, then y'all can deal with the new sheriff. Whatever the case, we're running out of space. Uh, it's always been an issue. Um, it's just becoming even more of an issue. We're growing, we're seeing a call volume grow. Um, right now, we're housing all of Pike County's inmates in our jails. Um, that's full, uh, the jail's full, which is good. Uh, but that's where I'm at with it. I'll entertain any questions.
I'm not even saying, but uh, you and I have talked about this several times and uh, and I've seen the space out there. I've had meetings out there with you guys and it is definitely, you know, we've been patching things together and uh, but you also mentioned something the other day that I think is, is neat as well, which you talked about your patrolmen.
Yep.
And you mentioned your patrolmen currently don't have a space.
Yeah, they don't have a space at all.
So would you, would you kind of share?
Yeah, I mean, our, our goal would be to move investigations up, up there. We have five investigators plus a couple secretaries and then I have a couple narcotics investigators. And then our goal would be to take some more of that splosh money, what's, what's remaining and repair that building and move our patrol division, our warrant division out there. I mean, we currently just, they just don't have anywhere to go. We, we've purchased laptops for their cars so they can do all their reporting in the cars. They don't have to come to the office that uploads uh, over the Verizon cellphone towers to our server. Um, so their, their car is their office. Uh, they, they don't have anywhere to, to sit down. We've got a Sheriff Vice, I think, when he was sheriff, uh, he closed the lobby of the sheriff's office, which used to be twice the size of that. So there is a small office out in the lobby now that uh, that several, I guess all of them are using to take in walk-in complaints.
Questions? Yes?
Yes, sir. Um, all right, Sheriff, I'll touch the third row.
Yes.
Sooner or later, there's going to be a jail bill.
I hope so.
You know, I, I think you and I have talked about this before and I think you've been magnanimous enough pushing that issue. How long out before that becomes an issue?
Unless you get this financed, it's right.
It's always money, right?
Yeah, the jail, the jail's really expensive. We, we've got, we, over the years since, since I've been sheriff, we've uh, replaced all the locks in the jail. We've replaced, with Sean's help, we've replaced all of the plumbing in the jail. Uh, the jail is still old. Uh, it's still a poor design, which is neither new nor theirs. a poor design, which is neither new nor theirs. Been operating for twenty-five, six years. But I mean, within the next fifteen years, there, there needs to be some slant to build a new facility. We, we tried this in fifteen or sixteen, and it got turned down by the voters. You know, I don't know that Lamar County was financially ready to take on the, the debt of the jail. It was about sixteen or seventeen million dollars at the time, or at least that's what was quoted. It probably cost us about twenty-one million.
Yeah, I think it's triple now.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I think we're in the forties.
Yeah.
So, but if we, if we look at a new jail down the road, is, are, are we looking at like a complex so that you guys will all be in one spot?
I mean, that would, yeah. There's never, there's never a good scenario where I, where I, I can't put hands on anybody that works for them, right?
Yes.
I don't like the fact that they're going to be a quarter mile or half a mile in town. But I've got a great investigations commander that's running that unit, and I have full faith in him to manage those people, and, and we'll have to check on it. But yeah, that would, that would certainly be, you know, office space is always it. The jails today are built with pod systems, and you can always add more pods if you need more jail space. But office space and, and storage space, I literally have people in closets that are, I have one, our warrant girl who works her career, and she's in the old evidence room, which is a cinder block. So we're making it happen.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. I've seen your facility, so you'll get no argument that you need a new one. I, I, you know, I've, I've said since I sat here, if you leave a building vacant, government's going to find something to put in.
Well, I found out we left it vacant. I want to get in.
You know, so that has always been my thing about the Martin Building was, when we moved here, because, you know, it wasn't a building that we needed to, to renovate. Right now, here we are. But if we're looking that says it's a stopgap to a forty million dollar jail, then that's a separate conversation, and I like to have. Is there, is it a lot that you feel like you'll need?
Oh, we need a bunch. We would need furniture. We went up there, Sean gave us the key. We need furniture and certainly security cameras, but we have money in your market splosh for that, that, that will cover those costs.
You think that's the best option?
I think it's the best option for us. It's the only option that I have right now.
Sean? Any other options?
No, sir. But I don't even know if that two hundred fifty would even put on what it was want to do at some anyway.
We've talked about this like three years. It's done about three years now. Do we have to spend all of the two hundred fifty since we gave the building?
We can give them ten thousand if you want to.
But you, but we can all agree, and, and, and we're putting this in minutes now, because we've all, we've all had this discussion that said, no one ever put it in the minutes what was going to happen to the Martin Building. We can put it in the minutes. This is a stopgap until we figure out what we're going to do about it, Jeff.
Yes, sir. Okay. I, I really, I don't have a question, but more of a comment. You guys put your lives on the line every single day, and I think the least that we can do is if we can make it easier or make you guys feel comfortable, do it. So I appreciate everything that you guys do for us. And, and also from a safety standpoint, having officers, sheriff deputies closer to town would also be a benefit if anything ever happens.
I think one part, it puts it closer to the courthouse as well. But I remember back, you know, we were having those discussions about this building. And, and for those of you who, you know, were not aware of, you know, one of the comments Commissioner Lovett made a few moments ago, but back when we made the decision to come to this building, there was discussion about selling that other building to help put down or help cover some of the cost. It was never part of a motion. It was never, Scott went back and did research for us on it. Corlett looked at it. It was never a condition, but it was a, a conversation. And so that's why this is, you know, a, a little bit of a, of a different conversation in nature. But I will, I will say this, that Commissioner Lovett talked about the stopgap, and, and this is not a permanent plan, but it, it does give you guys an opportunity to be closer to, to be more efficient in, in what you do. And, and that's the most important thing, especially if you look back at, at the time when we, I think the appraisal of that building we had, you know, yes, it would be beneficial on budget, but ultimately, you know, being able to keep you guys efficient is, is very important. Any other discussion?
One more, Mr. Chairman. I hate rushed decisions.
Yeah, I'm not. It's rusty as hell.
I'm just banking for it. Well, my, my follow-up with that is, you need this tonight?
No.
Or do you need this on the agenda for, for February?
Yeah, it can be on the agenda for March. I mean, it's going to be a little bit before that splosh money, but I played with a crew anyway. Am I wrong?
When would we be available?
Just, I probably about four hundred hours before it would be available.
So if we put it all on March, it gives us time to look in, make sure the money's coming?
Yes. We're running, we just got obligations that we've already.
Is that fast enough for you?
Anything, anything other than a no is great for me.
Yeah, no, we wasn't putting it on for a vote, but it was just information. I, I do appreciate you coming and, and, and sharing with everybody. Any additional questions at this time?
Thanks, sir. Think we'd use the space?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
You've been doing this for a long time, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, we'll have this on March.
March.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. I saw the head nod right there. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. I saw Corlett nod.
All right, the next item on our agenda for tonight is the administrator's report. Commissioner Towns, I mean, Mr. Townsend?
All right, just trying to get a little bit of information to you for the end of December. A lot of things are still coming in for December. We got six, it has to be rules, has it? When we can collect up revenues, see if it's something from December or October or November. So we actually are going to be closing out hopefully in the next thirty days, but just want to go ahead and give you kind of a report on that. This is kind of the expenditures. The revenue we have received for December was one thou, one million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. And what I guess is a total of revenue at the end of December was eleven million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. And we actually had one million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-seven cents spent in December. Just give us a total spent over the years, fifteen million, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. And then what it is, at the end of the year, we actually have a lot of revenue that comes in, like from different offices. I know that five, we actually, a couple of weeks ago, we actually got around, looking over five million dollars. They had some issues back there in the tax commissioner's office. We didn't get that in, so we actually have talked, I felt a little bit on that. That's why I did put that up there. There is some change. And you can see our cash flow, and like I said, we're not coming in at the time where our, our cash flow at the time. All right, for our general fund for December, we've had one million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Our special revenue funds, we've had twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. And then our capital project funds, we did have two million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. And our T-splosh account right now, we have two million, six hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and one cents. And that's actually what we paid for our, um, then, so we have a total of seven billion, four hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-eight cents at the end of December. All right, trying to give some updates on some of our projects that we have. We have added some new ones where the twenty-five, where we had the cars for Grant. I think he has received those cars, so we could, I can be changing that. The time I did this, it was actually in the process, but just been approved, so a lot of things we got to finish up. Animal shelter, just finishing up the AC, HVAC, the lighting, plumbing, just the, the ends. So we should be able to, then we're going to be trying to obtain our license from the state to be able to open up the shelter. Right now, we, Tyler was looking at March eighth, they have a ground opening. And so we're working on that. And as you see out there in the parking lot, we have received our C set of us on Friday. It's supposed to have been here a couple of weeks ago, but ice storm and everything, it's pushed it back, and then they had some issues with some getting that certification of the office. We have finished up the four house roof finally, and they have actually, I had them up there yesterday, making sure, when we did have that rain, to make sure it's not leaking or anything. And there was something, they said they heard a drip up there, so they are checking on that, so they can get back to the contractor. And then still working with Georgia, I had a meeting yesterday with Georgia DOT, talking with about that project we have out there where our ladder struts coming, coming down. So just making sure that James met with them and, you know, the pipe we need to extend out a little bit, so we're going to try to make sure we get that into the bid. So it makes us a little bit more to do that project. But actually, if we can get that pipe installed properly, we're going to have an issue down the road. So with that, and then we had that art that they are working with Daniel from Georgia DOT, he said they had got the plans, and they thought with that project, we'd be able to finish that out for too long. And me and Scott are working on getting proper resolution orders, like the place that they were to obtain right away from citizens out there, the rock spring, the chapel, and all that, so. So our collections for December for loss was a hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. So we have, where we were four percent of our projections for the year. And then we have for our splosh, we had two hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. So we're twenty-seven percent higher than what we actually forecasted when we get the, so I'm moving on pretty well. And then our, and then our T-splosh, we had two hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and eighty-three cents, which we were sixteen percent higher than what we forecasted. So all the collections for T-splosh loss, we also had our collections, or projections, when we actually set these up. AmeriPro is, we actually had three hundred and fourteen reports, a hundred and eighty-two transfers, eighty-six refusals, and then we had forty-six cancellations, and response time was seven minutes and thirty-one seconds. We did have six mutual aid with Upton and one with Pike. And that's all I have for the night, but AmeriPro has been doing a great job for us. They had some issues last, past month and into this month, because they've been by the hospitals lately, they are slammed right now. There's a lot of patients going in and out, and they've had a number of fire animals sitting on the wall trying to get their patients in before they can release themselves. I want to kind of say that I'm, everybody, so they know if there was any delay or anything, that's a big deal. With all the three counties, I think we have over eight out, we have eight ambulances, twenty-three counties that we do auto back-aid with. And then we do have mutual aid with other counties, but they've been dealing with the same thing, where that ambulance is sitting on the wall waiting to get into the yellow upside. I do hope that the hospitals can work through their issues, so we can get our ambulance back into our zones to be able to respond to how many more calls. That's all I have for the night.
Thanks, sir. Any, any questions for Mr. Townsend? Here now, we'll move on to public comments. The first one is Bonnie Martin.
Bonnie Martin, six-two-six, P. Montreux. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to see the newspaper, you know, today, and the editorial, you know, letter to the editor with.
Make sure they give you your minutes back.
Restart, please.
Former Commissioner Robert Heine, who went into detail, and it's a very good letter, I don't give a, everybody has a chance to read it, but he went into detail about some things about the Solid Waste Authority during his eight-year term of office. And, you know, most of you that are sitting in front of us right now, you know, didn't, you weren't, you know, part of that, you inherited this mess. You only have one commissioner, our chairman, who's part of it. And I really, really appreciate the other four of you standing up and saying, we need to investigate. You know, it's, it's very, very important for our county, for our credibility, number one, but, you know, the things that are going on with this are just unbelievably, you know, to all appearances, quite corrupt. And we appreciate you standing up and saying, we need to, you see what is going on here, we need to look into it. And I know you're being harassed, you know, all the time by the Solid Waste Authority and what they're doing. So I thank you very much for standing up for the citizens of Lamar County. Appreciate it.
Next is Harold Jackson.
And then Harold Jackson, two hundred and all dry, solid authority. Of course, this is a common topic. Solid Waste Authority. I understand all of y'all have been served with subpoenas to be in federal court, except maybe Mr. Taylor, never what you have got one on. If he didn't, I would like to see this commission high, high-end attorneys to represent us in federal court. And everybody be subpoenaed to appearing court. And Mr. Taylor hadn't already received one, that the defense, this is a suggestion that y'all suggest to them, because not only are y'all getting sued, we are getting sued. Everybody in this room is getting sued. This happens to y'all, that happens to us, because we wouldn't be there. I would like to see Mr. Taylor, if he hadn't been subpoenaed, to be subpoenaed along with the FBI and all the people that knows anything about this whole situation, and includes me and quite a number of people in this room. I would like to see the lawyers as for a jury trial, and it be brought before a jury. I think that's one way we could beat them in their own game. And I'll have to hand you your honor. That's a smart move. Truman? That's about all I have to say. I would, oh, one other thing. I understand y'all got a two-hundred page with request, a request or something of it. Don't, don't know what it was about. Would like to know what that's about, and I'd like to know if Mr. Taylor got that too. Since he was exempt, I'm going to want to understand on the subpoena. But I think that's something, maybe y'all can answer some of these questions in the round. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next? Next, Elaine Alada.
Good evening, Elaine Alada, one thirty-one, Speedo Chase. Truman Boal, you are a brave man in today's environment to offer to be on the Solid Waste Authority board. But I know that you will complement that, so we will support the citizens of this county before you could support what's been going on. I was going to bring up Mr. Heine's letter because I was quite impressed with it. One thing that Mr. Heine did not mention was the two commissioners, so I'm not afraid to do that. Those two commissioners were Nancy Thrash and Ryan Taylor. I also noticed in the flurry of the federal subpoenas like Harold, that Brian Taylor was not individually named, and I find that quite a lot. And because And because you did serve on the Solid Waste Authority for seven plus years, and we came to this commission multiple times, asking for the, uh, it to be looked into. And you were pretty good at seconding or making sure that Nancy's motions were carried, okay? I hope that you will continue to support, um, the citizens of this county instead of your previous Lamar County Solid Waste Authority board members. I personally feel that perhaps it was, it's time that you should look at resigning your seat, since you were involved so long on that board. Because I would like to see someone more trustworthy and honest, representing us as commission chair. And I want to add something for Brad. Can you imagine Brad if we had all the revenues that we were promised from the Solid Waste Authority, paid into this council over all these years? Brad, you could have a new jail and a ton of office space. Thank you.
Okay, the next person, Donald Hartman.
Donald Hartman, five-zero-seven, I'll be on the radio. Good boy. Congratulations on your appointment. I know you'll do your best, you've done for many, many years to serve our community. I don't see that coming, Bill Hawke, so, thank you. Overall, to me, it appears that we're to a pretty good start for the twenty, twenty-five year, and I hope we, again, keep moving forward. I attended with a few other folks our last workshop, and it kind of started off behind the door here, and due to technical difficulties, we had to finish it out here. I would like to say, in my opinion, I think having the workshop meeting like we did at this meeting out here in front of everyone, just in, again, my opinion. I love seeing you guys' faces and being able to hear you and see you act right here. So maybe February workshop meeting, we can continue on what was the norm. One thing I'd like to do is take an opportunity, we've got fire, we've got sheriffs back here. Our recent winter storm that we had, I'd like to thank them for their efforts that they provided to our citizens as public safety. You know, we just can't count on one part of you. You're, you're a family. So, uh, thank you for everything that you've done, and any other volunteers that helped our, our citizens here in our county during our recent storm. And that's about it. Thank you.
And the next, Dwight Fleming.
Dwight Fleming, ten-eleven, Van Buren Road. Over the past year, I have gotten probably more frustrated than all of y'all put together with the Solid Waste Authority department. I've had the pleasure of working on landfills throughout the southeast United States, plenty in Georgia, our own landfill here, Newton County. The one in Perry that is a model for everybody in the landfill business. The solid waste authorities that we have dealt with have been great. The solid waste authority for Lamar County is a joke compared to everybody else around us. I think based on these frivolous lawsuits that they're filing against us, I think you need to fight them tooth and nail, do whatever it takes to disband it. We're already on the hook for the loan anyway. Work with GFA, get the loan transferred to us, get a new solid waste authority in there, run it like it ought to be run. And we'll do away with a lot of this crap.
Next, James Hyde.
James Hyde, one-one-six, White Oak Drive. I have to say that most, if not all, of my comments have already been stated by the fair citizens of our county. I would like to add just a couple of things. To Donald's comments, uh, I think all public meetings should be held in the evening and in public. You hold these workshop meetings at ten in the morning or two in the afternoon, people who work can't be there. I realize there are conflicts in the evening as well, but by and large, the majority of people are available in the evening. And all public meetings should be held in the evening, including the solid waste authority. Secondly, I, everybody in here knows, you don't spend half a million dollars a year on attorneys if you have nothing to hide. And that's how much the SWO has spent. So just to reiterate their comments, we need to get to the bottom of this. And I guess in closing, I would just have to say the, uh, one person in this room that has been there all along, say, for the last year, year and a half. Who former commissions and yourselves, some of you, put their trust in to keep us out of this mess. You turned around and rehired without so much as leaving a question. I find that just unbound.
Okay, that ends our public comments. We now have roundtable. Commissioner Fletcher? That's it today. Commissioner Love?
Yes, sir. I've got a few things. So the last meeting we had, um, we appealed to the state to force some help. That help is not going to be forthcoming. The reasoning is that there are a hundred fifty-nine counties in, in this state. We are the only one, only one with an authority that doesn't work with their community. Therefore, the state cannot renegotiate all hundred fifty, uh, authorities for all hundred fifty-nine counties, just because of the issues that we're having here. So, you know, these are the things that we've been dealing with over the past two years. Even when you look for help, they're able to hide behind some legalities. And I think that encourages them, but let me tell you something. This is what it looks like. Every single week, this is last week's lawsuit, this is this week's lawsuit. These things embolden the people that are sitting up here. So every week, we have a visitor that comes in and logs in to watch these meetings, every single week. And I am telling you that all this does is embolden the people of, of this commission to continue to seek the truth. We are going to find the truth, no matter how much of this you dump on our desk, we are going to find the truth. And so, you know, a long time ago, the beauty of a little bit of age is you meet some people that have already been there and done that. And one of the great people that I met along this journey is the former representative, John Yates. The late John Yates used to say all the time, he said, "You know you're over the target when you start getting flack." Turns out that John Yates was a pilot during World War Two. So that man knew something about taking, taking shots under fire. This is what flack looks like. We're going to take every bit of this, and we're going to find the truth. In a few minutes, we're going to go into executive session, our attorney's here, ACCG sent us another attorney to fight these federal lawsuits, these frivolous lawsuits. And we will continue on behalf of our community to find the truth. No matter where the truth lies, we are going to find the truth. So those people that come on and watch this from afar and send these to us, keep bringing them, we are going to find the truth. That is all I have, sir.
I would like to add that I did not bring my package because it's heavy, sir.
Oh, that's going to be a hard one to follow, Jason. Should we switch seats next time? I brought mine because my daughter gets the mail every day, she comes home and she gets off the bus and she brings it to me. And she says, "So look, mommy, I got something to continue, must be another lawsuit." So me and my kids, I understand what is going on here. I agree with everything Commissioner Love has said. Since I am on the Solid Waste Authority Board, um, I wanted to give an update on where we're at with a couple of questions. I was informed that I needed to get a personal email. I believe that in the sake of transparency, I'm not asking any questions on proprietary information. I'm not asking any questions that is strictly attorney-client privilege. I am not getting another email, they can use my email at the county. Everything that I'm asking for is subject to open records. Um, I've been asked about the brick, uh, have not gotten an answer of why the Anicon building has been being bricked up. Um, I sent three, two or three emails out, one to every single member of the board, nobody responded to me. I resent that email out. I carbon copied, uh, Mr. John Richards, the attorney, and I also carbon copied Mr. Ford, who is our executive director. Still, again, no response. So yes, the Anicon building is being bricked, no, I have not gotten an answer as to why or the minutes where that was approved.
Here's my packet, I thought Denise was bringing a new phone book in when she brought it in. They think, they got somebody going back down here, they wrong. I'm not backing down, I'm going to do everything I can. This whole thing talks about fourth amendment violations. Nobody tried to search anything, nobody tried to seize anything. All I can, this lawsuit is to, my son or my daughter, I go to buy and co-sign with them. I co-sign alone, that means if I don't pay for it, they don't pay for it, I pay for it. Two years later, a truck disappears, and I go, "Son, where's your truck?" He goes, "Dad, that's a fourth amendment violation, you can't see my truck." That's how I like it, that's the symbols I can put there, but I'm not backing down.
I do know we have, uh, executive session for litigation. There's no business as planned after the executive session, so if you would like to stay, you can. A couple of things, I will say this, um, there was a comment in regards to my supporting your votes for the Solid Waste Authority. But as you guys know, the only time I vote is if there's a tie. And if I vote for something, the reason I vote for it is because either one legally of a recommendation, or one, or second, to make sure that we're doing things the right way. And using the right resources. And right now, we are at that point. You know, yes, we made some attempts, like with, uh, Commissioner Love had mentioned, with the legislative, uh, situation. Did I think that was going to probably work from the beginning? No, but it was worth trying. There are decisions that are made. I had somebody stop me in the grocery store the other day and say, you know, "Gosh, you guys can't make emotional decisions." No, we don't make an emotional decisions, we are trying to do whatever we can. And right now, we are poised in the best position, we have, uh, three sets of lawyers right now that are working to help to mitigate this. And that's what needs to happen. That's where it's going to be resolved. Somebody mentioned earlier, in a courtroom with a jury or what have you, it's going to resolve in a courtroom. We're not going to be able to resolve that here. We've attempted it, it's, it's been tried, it's been done, it's been talked about, it's been published, it's been written about, it's not going to be resolved here, only in, in a court setting. The, the other thing I wanted to mention is the norm of the workshop, uh, Mr. Hartman. The norm used to be in our old building, we had our workshop meetings in the conference room. There was a conference room, and there was a small area in the back that people would come, occasionally, for a long time, we didn't have anybody, Fred Marshall show up occasionally and sit around the table. But if you look at all the counties around us, they all have their workshops during the day, because it's designed to have their staff, their staff to come and sit in, the directors, and, and communicate and have a working, working meeting. Someone made the suggestion of bringing this table back here, putting it out front, that was a phenomenal suggestion. It was probably about as good as the suggestion of Mr. Bonnie Martin of putting that podium over here on the side. So that is definitely something we can try, our next workshop, put the table out here, and then still allow people to be able to sit here. But the suggestion was made, uh, and it was something that I had been thinking about for a while, and, and all the commissioners have been talking about it, was, you know, when we are trying to do a workshop meeting, it's very hard to have a conversation with each other. And our directors, when we're looking here and looking there, as, as like any other business, when you have a boardroom or sitting around tables, that was one of the reasons that we, we went back in there. But we will, we'll bring a table out here, see what we can do out front. Sheriff, again, he's gone now, thank you, uh, China, if you would, tell him, thank you for, thank you for coming. When I asked him to come, and, and Sheriff, uh, Sheriff, thank you, when I asked him to come, he, he was, he didn't hesitate. And, and the reason is, is because I wanted you guys to hear the compelling story from him. And obviously now, you guys realize, uh, some of the things that, that, that go on in our, our county. If you look around, yes, the Solid Waste Authority is the buzz turn. But last week, when there was a storm, and the ambulance service had to go to a level one, and they could only move people during emergencies. And the sheriff's office was out on the road, a deputy's car got hit because of an accident. I can guarantee those people on the side of the road involved in the accident didn't give a darn about Solid Waste Authority. And I'm not saying that to take, take away from the Solid Waste Authority, I'm just going, saying that to say that there's so many important things that we do in this community. The wreck department, senior center, there's so many things we do. So yes, we don't, we need to keep our foot on the gas and resolve that issue, but there's so many things that we do that's important. With that being said, that's all I have for tonight. I entertain a motion in regards to executive session.
Mr. Temper, real quick, um, any chance that we could take a short recess, take our photos, and then adjourn to executive session, so that, uh, I know, I see Jordan standing back there just waiting on me.
Yes, that's, that's the plan. I entertain motions in reference to executive session. As a motion by Commissioner Fletcher and a second by Commissioner Gillis, to adjourn to executive session. All in favor, see the vote by standing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.